Hi, from the United States of America, to the Republic of America's standers, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to everyone.
Good morning.
Me and Ross this morning for our agenda.
The move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We also have minutes from January twenty fifth. Let's move to a brief.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. No comments, any comments from the public that's not on the agenda? Steve, let's just go down and talk quickly about this appointment in the eminent domain, Carl.
I talked to two gentlemen here in town, we need two from the world and two from town. Steve Samuel, the former mayor here in town, said he'd be happy to serve at the point. And that's the only one I have, a live candidate, yet they dropped out.
Uh, how often would they meet?
Whenever the county board is called, sometimes. They'll meet at all, I think the last meeting was a couple of years ago.
Okay.
Yeah, they aren't very regular.
I called Dr. Kevin Flear, and he was gonna get ahold of you.
Oh, okay, I haven't heard from him since.
Well, this is Friday, so he said he'd probably give you a call first of the week.
We have to.
Need two from the world, so.
I have two more of these.
We have a big row with a.
Kevin would be real.
We got one, we're one short of each.
One of each, okay.
I got a couple other that I'm gonna, I can call, and try to get ahold of them.
And Kevin's not a done deal, right?
No. He was gonna, yeah.
We'll keep track, Peggy, I know we need to get that done.
Um, do you wanna appoint Steve now, or do you wanna wait till you have everybody else?
I'd put him down for next week, or can we appoint him now? Okay, oh, well, let's get him on there, then we know what's up.
I'd move to appoint Steve. Sanders to the eminent, the main board.
Second. Just a second.
Alright, any discussion on that one?
And that would be as an owner of city or town property, correct?
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
One down, here you go.
Yeah, thank you. Alright, Jeff, you wanna come up, go over the requests for Gilmore City, right?
Thanks for having me on the agenda. One of our district patrons, Julian Pazel, had just brought the information about your recent donation to the daycare in Humboldt, or the new daycare. And so we thought we'd come over and make proposals as well, so I have a sheet for you here. Take those and pass them through. Specifically, um, we moved into the school building at Gilmore City in August of two thousand fourteen, from a couple mobile units that we had across the street. Not real safe, and we were growing, and since then, our growth has been, um, pretty unbelievable. We're up to about a hundred kids, uh, full and part-time, uh, at the daycare with a staff of about fifteen, so we need some, uh, new materials, uh, books, toys, and things. And so I've listed those there for you. Uh, the literacy curriculum materials, again, those are books, um, purposeful play centers for, uh, the four different rooms that we have. Uh, a few toys, um, that we haven't had donated, we have some donations from our parents, uh, some equipment, uh, strollers and a couple of rockers for our baby room, uh, a couple of other things. And then some technology for after-school kids, uh, we have quite a few after-school kids that stay after, so we're wondering about, um, you know, again, the possibility of that donation. Answer any questions you might have.
Are you seeing your numbers grow?
Yes, yeah, we have exploded, we've probably had about seventy, uh, kids, um, before we moved in the building, now we're up to about a hundred. Um, and in May, we're getting seven new babies, and I'm not sure where all these people are, you know, living, but.
Yeah.
With that many students, you can't make it cost flow without additional funding?
Right, it's been difficult.
That's the problem, you have to start with zero base, and you need something to get them started.
Yeah, that's right. It's, uh, the cash flow is a problem because of the salary and benefits, and that all has to come through the daycare and the school, um, you know, can't contribute to that. Uh, we do have some contributions from the city, uh, from sales tax money, which is fantastic, but, uh, we need some new equipment.
Okay.
This is probably following a request, um, that will be reviewed here in January, we'll review all the requests for future projects, and then we'll probably have to address that point.
I know a lot of Humboldt people make the commute over there.
Yeah, yeah, we do have, a good number of Humboldt folks that come over, so.
Hundred kids, that's quite a few, I didn't realize it pretty much.
Yeah.
In your case, the school makes, what's the involvement with the school now, as far as daycare?
Actually, the school, we charge, uh, since we're in the building, uh, we do charge a small fee for the rooms, uh, for the heating and cooling, and then the, just the room rent. But as far as that's concerned, that's it.
That's it?
Yeah.
This would be a one-time request?
Absolutely, yeah.
They're doing a good program, because a lot of people come from all around, come your way.
Yeah, I know, that's always one of the number-one questions they have, is there any daycare around, when people come to the community?
Yeah.
I'm glad you're there to fill the gap, boy, you're doing good. Alright, thank you, Jeff.
Yeah.
And you said January, you meant February?
Oh, well, we start by.
Before we start, find March.
Yeah, yeah, I choose some of these, yeah.
Got it, okay.
I'm sorry.
That's alright.
It's already February.
Well, it's just the first day, you got it.
I do, yeah. She gave that thing written on her, she made it up, but she has it written on her, it's already scheduled, right?
Yeah.
She's the one asking, try to leave me in.
I understand.
Alright.
Alright, thank you, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
It is February, Peggy.
It is.
Alright. Why is it a little early for me? Why don't we go ahead and start on, let's go ahead and start on committee reports, I guess, before we go.
Okay, Scott, I can give you a couple of updates on stuff if you like.
Let's do that.
Okay. Got a notice from the Department of Natural Resources that our master matrix was approved, received and approved, was on file. Um, Brittany Vicki wants to set up a date with you, they're ready to sign the papers for the Corn Belt, um, loan that we're getting. Um, she said the full board didn't come there, but at least we would need Jerry there. So, if you want to look at your calendar, we can do that later.
Sure.
Bruce, I need you to okay this, this was for your room for ISACU. Um, you probably saw in with your information on the table, the Landfill filed their financial report, so that'll be put on file. Um, Scott Smith with the, um, IMWCA came last week and met with me, and we went over, um, he's strictly working his comp. And he went through, um, some of our original comp cases. We have a very good mod test at this time, but we're only halfway through the year, so we'll see how the rest of the year turns out, but he says it's looking very good at this point. Uh, well, he had some recommendations to us of things that we needed to change, what to do, one of us to get a safety director appointed, um, since we've had a vacancy there, we'll get to that issue, too. And a committee, and I think we had a committee, but I'm not sure if that information is still on file in the previous office, or if that has gone by the wayside, or where. But we'll need to get a, a committee appointed, get our safety director appointed, um, that's important to get that put together. And then we do have the right to work, return the work policy for secondary roads, but I don't believe we have a county-wide, he suggested we have a county-wide return-to-work policy. So, we'll get to working on some of those suggested changes.
Well, once we get a safety director appointed, we can't charge that person with coming, help us get the committee appointed.
Yeah, yeah, and that's how it was done last time, too.
During our budget here, we'll talk about setting up a date, handling, we need to try to start moving on that now, yes, it's already been two weeks. Do you know that note on the?
Yeah. Yeah.
Did you review that?
Well, I did, but you know, I haven't seen any past ones, I was wondering, what is, what is the trend there? I noticed we're two thousand dollars short.
I will pull up.
I'd like to look through those, if I could, be anything new on that.
I know sometimes they were filed just in the Landfill file over there, and sometimes I got them and put them back for the rest of them, so I will look and see if I have one back there. Guess so.
So, then if we have a deficit on it, we have to assess each, how do we do that, Peggy?
Um, we go by whatever they bill us, so if they bill us for extra.
Yeah, 'cause I was just talking with the auditors down there about that, and it varies from year to year by paramount money.
That's what I thought.
This year was around twelve thousand, and even the last year was about eighteen, nineteen thousand.
So, their numbers aren't real consistent.
No, it's not a consistent flat rate.
Testing they have to do, I suspect.
Yeah, if something comes back high, then they gotta go back and retest.
Like here on engineering testing, it's over ten thousand, so.
Take water samples and air samples, and get a lot of reports, send it into the DNR twice.
So, is that for both of them?
The old, I mean, all year, no, that's not for, just.
No, I know, but what about the one down by, down to Parkland?
That I don't know.
Do they ever sample that?
I don't think they do anymore.
I think after so many years, it's fine, it's been dormant, they do it every so many years.
That's what I wondered if they, I mean, it's been a long time since that's one.
I never knew this one out there, to tell you the truth. I've never heard it mentioned, and maybe, maybe it's live, but I didn't know about it.
I don't know either.
No.
Maybe you shouldn't say it.
I've been hearing something.
They must've got under the old air hose, maybe, before they, uh.
Yeah, before they started monitoring all this stuff, and put in the leak system.
Well, that was early, I mean, I was a kid when it was open.
Where's it located at, even out there?
Uh, right along where the tracks were on the north side.
Oh, okay.
Behind, uh, what's that sawmill out there?
Yeah. Alright.
Must be further up cleaned up, I walked by, I've never noticed anything, no.
Okay, that's all figured out. Yes, you ready? Yeah.
I literally blow the drain.
One second. All in favor?
Alright. Well, that aisle hat pretty proud today, ain't it?
Yeah.
Well, while you guys are waiting, can I tell you a joke?
Sure.
This guy, this guy likes his girlfriend, goes to the Super Bowl, and, uh, they get really good seats, same time he's been around a football game, and she really. Dave, I thought about a coin, one team gets the coin, so the whole team, everybody's talking about getting the quarterback. Why have they worked up over twenty-five?
Alright, we have several drainage items this morning, the first one on the agenda is Mitch Dave and Troy Dins, this discussion on a construction in Humboldt County right away.
Um, my main thing is, right now, the county policies, fifteen hundred dollars across the road. And I've talked to contractors, and that'll cover it. Closer to double, so then I just think it ought to be lifted to twenty-five hundred.
Paul, what's the policy if you go through the procedures, does it pay one of fifteen hundred, then?
Uh, we pay a hundred percent on a lot of them.
If you go through the procedure by different.
Right, on all the drainage districts, ones with the hearings, we're paying a hundred percent, and, uh, if, if you want to go through the hearings, uh, required, just like, uh, drainage district, which is. I should pull a process out in the book, uh, for individual drainage laws, and Rick can correct me, but I think if, uh, just with any other file, uh, improvement requested, uh, you can file with the auditor of us to, uh, set up a hearing for any kind of proposed improvement, whether it's a crossing, or crossing and landing to others, anything. If, uh, for that, then you have a hearing, you notify all people involved, and then after all of that, uh, process is through, if it is to provide suitable drainage, uh, along the natural water course to a suitable outlet, uh, then under those conditions, the county pays a hundred percent. It, uh, it's not all that different than most of the drainage laws, all the drainage laws are, um, ultimately go back to whoever receives the benefit pays. So, if all of those things occur, the county pays, because we receive benefit, and it is along the natural water course. If you took the road, the easiest way to look at it is, if you took the road leveled it, does water flow through it? If the water flows through at that point, if that's the natural course, yes, we have some responsibilities. Some of them, uh, in the past, that we've had, uh, real deep cuts, uh, to go to an outlet that was closer than along the natural water course, um, we discussed that in great detail. That's one of the reasons we have the policy we have, is on these gray area ones that aren't real well-defined, the board said, okay, uh, we'll pay, uh, fifteen hundred dollars for it. In some cases, it pays most of the costs, in some cases, like Mitch says, if it's a larger tile, it's not going to, it's not going to. The bottom end of it, a twelve-inch concrete, it pays a good chunk of, uh, the twelve-inch concrete we require around a gravel road crossing, the minimum end of it.
So, Mitch, other counties pay more than fifteen percent?
I can't answer that.
Okay. I mean, I wouldn't, Jeff, recommend that.
Well, that's, I'm pretty sure the sooth is at fifteen hundred. Um, most, several of the counties don't have hard, fast rules, that's the problem, um, so it's, it's hard to compare them. I mean, a person could do some more calling.
Uh, they have hard, fast rules, they're just a little different.
Yeah.
All of them would pay a hundred percent if it went, uh, went through the process, but on the gray area ones, it amounts to, if the county receives the benefit, they pay. If it's all in, because, remember, we started with this with a twenty-two-foot cut or something ridiculous a number of years ago, where they wanted the county to pay for going through the road. And it was of no benefit to the county, because it was the individual property owner that was shorting the distance to his outlet. Uh, instead of going south where he had already the outlet, he wanted to go straight east through the road grade. And of what benefit is that to the rest of the county, or even to the road system, as, uh, in that area, there is none, so.
That's why the natural drainage path comes in, too, it's, like you said, if you take the road out, where would the water go? If it generally follows that route, that's part of the condition.
It's fifteen hundred, and to defend, uh, yeah, costs have gone up, I mean, we had several at the time that were, uh, twelve-hundred, thirteen-hundred, that went through, under fifteen hundred.
And you're seeing that above.
And you have one on claims, or you don't have claims this week, it'll be next week, you're gonna see where the contractor went through it in inclement weather, and he opted to haul a lot of aggregate in, because he didn't have suitable backfill, and, and he paid, and the landowner paid a lot more, but that was because he went through in late November, and it wasn't fit. Uh, if we're paying for it all, the other thing that we did on some of these prior to this policy, is if we're paying for it all, we have the right to see complete plans and put it in ourselves. Or hire somebody else to put it in. Remember, uh, several of you weren't on the board, but we had a sixty-four-hundred dollar quote to go across the gravel road at one point, we put that in. Uh, and if we didn't put it in tomorrow, but we put it in prior to them tiling anymore, and Mort probably remembers that, and, uh.
So, Mitch, did you just pay for the one-twenty-five, did you pay the whole bill on that, the county?
On the main?
On the crossings, on the main?
Secondary roads, yeah, um, yeah, because it was a design presented, it was the drainage district, yeah.
Same on DD two, you paid the whole bill, alright?
For, yeah, for drainage district, tile, crossing the roads.
I think one of the most expensive ones we've had to date is the one over Pioneer, a few years ago, there was some eighty, I wanna say seventy-two thousand dollars a road crossing, the one that started in Webster County that went clear up. We crossed four or five crossings in two highways.
Yeah.
And, is this on gravel road?
Yes, and there's an existing tile there already.
Good. How big?
How big a tile was put in?
There's eight-inch tile there now, like, over twelve-inch.
Which one, Mitch, the south one?
The one in Weaver Township, and.
The one in Weaver Township, for Mitch, Gary brought in last fall, and we were missing a few documents on it, otherwise, you guys approved it, conditionally approved it, uh, based on Gary signing it, uh, getting some, uh, correspondence from the downstream property owner.
Oh, that's right.
And one other thing you mentioned, and you remember, oh, request for, uh, we needed a request as to, do we want the expedited, or, uh, request for funding, the fifteen hundred dollars? Or, or do you want to file and, and go, and, and he could do that now, assuming he's not gonna put the tile in now, that'd be a candidate to request it. But it all boils down to, he does have tile there, uh, in this case, at least it's, uh, the south one is very well-defined, it's already tiled, and, and, uh, and where we can get caught for, for the whole county is if we've had some requests for some enormous pipes, uh, that would be well over an inch, uh, plus drainage coefficients, and, you know, so suitable outlet is what comes into question on some of those, and it's, it's hard to tell somebody uh, that, uh, if they want a twenty-four-inch pipe, that a twelve-inch would probably give them an eighteen, uh, you know, a suitable outlet, or adequate. So, by definition, suitable, and the adjectives in the code is, would be up to you, gentlemen, up here. The code says fence to fence, I've never seen any cap on it. The article, fence to fence, state or county pays? Uh, state, county, or city pays if the process followed through the code along the natural water course, but it's paid. Right, and that's where everybody's involved, everybody, uh, you would notify anybody potentially affected, uh, and to make sure all voices are heard.
Okay, Mitch, what do you think?
Uh, the one in Weaver Township, I'd like to do the process to get the whole thing paid.
Okay.
You'd remove the fifteen hundred.
On the other one, right?
Right.
Was that other one again, Mitch, that's been approved?
Did you say that?
No, the Weaver one was approved.
Weaver one's approved.
The Adrian one we haven't had up here yet, Mitch. That's the Weaver one? The Weaver one is already conditionally approved. Yes, the one in one-twenty-five, we hadn't seen till last week, and that, that would be up to, that's clear.
So, you're gonna be one-twenty-five?
And then that would amount to filing, uh, with the auditor of us.
On the one-twenty-five?
Yeah. No, no, on the other one, on Weaver, if he wants it paid in a hundred percent, he needs to initiate a hearing with the auditor, like any other improvement.
Okay. Sound good?
Yeah, I'll do that.
Thanks, Mitch. Alright. Okay. Retention pond, I guess the party's involved here, you wanna start on that?
Sure, let's talk through it, um. We're very close to being done with the rest of the items on the contract, as a matter of fact, the, I talked to the contractor this morning, um, they're putting in five area drains, or calling them the clean water area drains, where you put in multiple laterals close together, and outlet right into the tile. They got two left, they're gonna finish those today, they gotta get an apron guard on the apron at the outlet, uh, they're gonna do that today. I don't believe they've placed the riprap, that has to be done. The problem with the job is that a lot of stabilization rock was required, and we're getting those areas summarized, um, so that used up a lot of additional funds. I looked at the engineering on the job, it looks like we're gonna be about forty thousand under on the engineering, based on the preliminary engineering report, so that's good news. But I'm afraid we have to get down to the bottom dollar on this to give a true answer, a guaranteed answer, as far as the pond. I'm not optimistic because of the amount of rock, it went over a hundred thousand dollars on the rock for stabilization, so, um, but I wanna, I'd like to reach an agreement with Cree-Tex, Denver, and have all that, um, and see exactly where we're at, we can't, couldn't pinpoint it yet, um, but I was happy with that engineering number, um, when I was summarizing the costs, so, um, I haven't given up on it, and even if the funds aren't there for this, to do it within this project, we're gonna go after the funds, anyway, um, to try and get it accomplished.
What's the big estimate, total cost, just by part guess?
For.
For the pond?
Oh, it's varied so much, um, fifty or sixty thousand, I wanna say, I, I, I'd have to, I'd have to look at the quantities, because the quantities changed, um, um, dealing with NRCS, so. I wish we could be specific today, but we can't, I, because I don't wanna rule it out until we have the final numbers worked out, so.
So, if we're a hundred thousand over on rock, and there's forty thousand up in the area, does that have to be absorbed against that first, or can that be categorized differently? I mean, that rock, it's an overrun, shouldn't that stand alone?
Um, I'm gonna clear that with Mike Borland, yeah.
I'm trying to get.
Yeah, yeah, I'm gonna, we're gonna get Mike involved in this.
But Mike's gonna be the key to.
Yes.
This part of it, we can do.
Yes, that's right.
Is if Mike says no, in my, so we apply this to another round.
Exactly, exactly. But, yeah.
There's a lot of importance to this.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's why.
And that was part of the understanding, that we were working towards this, you know, as the.
Correct.
Some of the work's already been done, prepared for the pond, and Mike, right?
Yes, 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 that's correct, that's why we need to push. Exactly, that's why we need to push it forward, whether it's within this project or outside of this project, we still need to push it, push for it.
Because there should be options.
Yes, there are, there are. Yes, there are, so, and they're pushing the environmental issues, that's a pos, very positive thing in our favor. I just wish we could get it accomplished within this project, and I haven't given up on it yet, but I, I'm not real optimistic.
So, you will talk to Mike?
Yep, and I will.
And get back to us soon.
Yep, and then finishing today, um, we will work through the quantities with Cree-Tex, and, and we're pretty satisfied as far as quantities with Denver, and that will help us work with Cree-Tex, because we're not gonna pay for a lot more of a particular pipe than was put in.
Right.
So, and there has been pipe, there's, last time I was out there last week, there were still several pipe on the job that had to be hauled back, some excess pipe, so. That could be part of the issue with Cree-Tex, we'll get through it, um, within February, working out the final quantities with Cree-Tex and Denver, and then working with Mike as far as the extra funds that would take, so.
Hopefully, going back to Des Moines would be one thing, but going back out here to Humboldt, so couldn't their supervisor come out and count the pipe?
Probably.
Know what?
Yeah, probably.
Numbers laying on the ground?
Yeah. But there's been some hauled back, I believe, already, so that's, yeah, did that get handled correctly, we're not sure.
Right. You have to go through all of that.
Yeah, we come, we usually come very close in the end, um, last project, we had some differences at the end, and we ended up just saying, this is what was installed, we can understand a few pipe here and there.
Sure.
Really worked it out. Um, so.
Well, I don't know how it's that short, you know.
Well, it's the rock.
We went into this, and I told you what I wanted to have that washout on my property.
Yeah.
There was no waiver, I wasn't changing my mind on it.
Right.
And, and now you're optimistic that it ain't gonna happen at all?
Well, it's probably not as part of this project because of the rock items.
So, if it gets done through a different funding, who's still liable for maintaining that?
That's all, that, all of that is worked out within the agreement for the pond.
The original agreement?
Well, NRCS probably will, it depends on how the funds are coming, NRCS may want an agreement for maintenance on the pond of some kind. That, that'll have to be worked out, too. We can, the goal, though, is to make it so that the drainage, it's part of the drainage district consideration, and that's our goal, that's what we want.
That's why I understood it.
That's why we want it, that's the way we want it.
If it in, it would get dug out.
Right.
If the dam breached and it washed out, it would be fixed by the drainage district.
Then it's to the drainage district's advantage to do that, and NRCS will recognize the drainage district as an authority that can, can have that, uh, responsibility. So, I believe that will all happen. Yeah, we're not getting away from that, don't wanna get away from that, 'cause it's in the best interest of the district to have it maintained.
Mike normally has some discretionary funds that aren't large amounts of dollars that should be available, and I think, as, Mike is a good person, a good guy. I think, as, Mike is a good person, a good guy.
Absolutely.
I think if you explain to him in all the situations, I think he will work for us.
Absolutely.
We got to go through it because there's nothing with NRCS that's going to work it in.
Right, and, and he'll want to see the final dollars and everything.
The project is still, the project is not complete until that.
That's right, that's right, that's what we want. That's absolutely what we're after, it's a matter of the procedure to get there. And he, but Mike will want to see the final dollars and then he'll use his, what he had allotted for the project, see what's there yet, and then if there's needed, look for other funds. Mike's real good, oh, yeah, Mike's real good to work with, so.
The key is just to be in communication with him and make sure he's clear on everything that's going on.
Keep the process moving, absolutely, absolutely. That's why I'm saying during February, we're going to get all this worked out.
So you think by the first of March, you can have a response?
Yes, absolutely.
Put a time on it, I don't.
We'll be, this week or next, we'll be working on the final quantities, just to get that hammered out.
All right.
I just got a letter last week from Cree-Tex as far as what they think the difference is at this point. And, yeah, that's what we got to work through.
Well, maybe by February twenty-ninth, then we have another discussion on it, so we're all clear where we're at. Would that work, or the first, or this next week in March, what would work for you, Rick?
I'm pretty sure either one would work.
We get to nail it down, but I think it's important enough, we want to get.
Yeah, we want to keep it upfront here.
Yeah, it needs to be.
Let's put March twenty-ninth?
Or February twenty-third, right?
February twenty-nine? And how about eight forty-five?
Is it open?
Eight forty-five? And while we're, we go back over to September twenty, Rick?
Yeah, we'll have all the dollars summarized, we'll know where we're at on one twenty-five, we'll know what Mike has said on dollars, and if we need other sources, what those might be and what the timing would be on that, so.
Maybe Mike can come up too, I mean, wouldn't be bad to have him up, kind of see where we're at on some of the stuff.
True, true.
If he would like to, so. So I'm going to make that as a motion, so we can just.
Okay, I'll make the motion for the hearing on the, or not a hearing, but a meeting on February twenty-ninth at eight forty-five on the retention pond.
I got a second.
Second.
Okay, Mark.
Thank you.
We'll try to hold.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely, that's well put.
Yeah.
Because we'll be getting, we'll know a lot more actually in the next few days, but to be sure it's resolved, I think that's a good timing, it's time. Exactly, because he will, he'll want to do that.
He'll have to review all that.
That's right. He'll want to see our final numbers and review it all.
Why do we look at a completion date on that project, one twenty-five?
Well, um.
I mean, how close are they getting to being completed?
They're, other than some riprap, they'll be done this afternoon. So the, the question will be, do we keep it open?
Through this process?
Through this process. Now, we can do a supplemental contract and finalize this one, because it would be nice to get all the grant funds you can as soon as you can.
Yeah, because we don't get the funding until it's completed.
Right, right.
And that stops, that helps stop the interest.
But Mike would entertain, I'm sure, a supplemental contract for the pond so that we could finalize the rest of it.
That's what I'm hoping you'll do.
Yeah.
I think that's probably all this is going to do.
Yeah, I think so. Because, yeah, that will speed up getting the grant funds. Right, exactly, so you can say finalize everything.
That is a good job.
Oh, yeah. They're concerned, even this morning, you know, they, you know, we're trying to finish, we pushed, and I said, we're not going to recommend damages, you were here, yes, you had to pull out a few days at a time twice, but it was jobs you had to do, and it was emergency jobs. You pushed, and they, they've said they'll be done this afternoon with the last two area drains.
Do we have an annexation on that one too?
Yeah, there's some, some annexation we're looking at and.
So we need that completed too?
We're going to talk to Mitch a little bit too about some, so.
So we need to get that complete too before?
Yeah, yes. Yeah. Well, there's some on two yet. I guess, I think we've probably done all we're going to do on, on one twenty-five, except possibly, you know, talking to Mitch on some areas, but.
Are you doing recent?
Yeah, that's, yeah, and we've got area figured out for that. So we'll be coming back with something this winter to get that resolved, so that by the time the bills do out, everybody's included. Yeah.
Very good.
I would also call Cree-Tex and get the ball in motion for them neither, because you get whatever the magic number, snow on top of what they got forecast.
Yeah, I'll give them a call today.
And you're going to get it out there till spring.
Yeah.
So they, somebody might as well at least go out and take a survey and see if there's.
A good point.
Some pipeline out there, if there's five.
Yep.
If any of them are broke, so we know what we're dealing with.
Exactly, we'll give them a call. I might not get it today, they'll get it tomorrow.
Or Cree, whatever their name is.
Yeah, I, I don't have it in my mind yet, it's actually an app, that's all I know. Yeah.
He's always. I have a question for you too. You know, Trish and I did meet with, what's the name of the manager a couple weeks ago?
Bob Powers?
Bob Powers from Iowa Agricultural Mitigation Bank. And I was just, has he, has he touched back with you at all since we met with him? Any thoughts on what, what he was trying to get across to us?
He was wanting names of landowners, possible, you know, like tenants who farms.
Like a regional landowner?
Yeah, a regional landowner, in specific areas. And I believe they're looking at establishing a wetland mitigation bank in their area. It's in like Weaver ten, eleven, Avery thirty, thirty-four and thirty-five, please? Or is it thirty-three?
Thirty, thirty-four, five, somewhere in there. We met with him, he went over kind of how that project works. Everybody's looking for mitigation, you know, banks. Some of these areas are getting real hard to tile and drain out, that's the most likely candidates, so. It's kind of near the stages, I don't know if we're going anywhere, but it's, you know, if anybody's interested in talking to this guy about it, I'm sure he'd be willing to listen, so.
He's working with the Iowa Agricultural Mitigation Bank. And Kevin Greggs, he's, he's spoken at IDTA before, Kevin Greggs has. He hired Bob to help him with some of these. And some of this, I think, might be in the area where it's going to be terribly expensive to close some of those drainage wells.
As an option.
As an option, they're looking at expanding the areas.
And then closing the well.
And then closing the well, yes. I, I think it's, it's a, it could be a good, great approach to get some more of those areas handled.
And the need and demand is there for it.
You guys have been active, and that, yeah, that helps them look at your area. So they've got several things in their fa, in their favor that, that could be beneficial here, so.
I have a sinking chair here.
Oh, yeah.
Now you got that.
All right, that's all on that, but we'll keep in touch if you hear back from them. Anybody from the farmers that are interested, that's out there, or something's probably got some merit at this stage with some of these act closing that get very expensive.
And the good thing with them is they basically handle everything. I mean, it, the party.
They do the whole process.
They do the whole process.
They do the whole part.
Yes, yeah.
And areas aren't farmable anymore.
That's right, that's right.
So that's a good option to look at. All right, I guess our last item, and we're a little early, but I think it's all right to go ahead. We have a discussion on meeting ninety-two, this is from, on the bill with blacktop service. Rick and Trish did a little research in the last couple of weeks, see where we're at, and I guess I'll let someone.
Well, I, I had talked to Doug, but he didn't have an answer for me yet. When I talked to him last week, and he said he was working on it, and this must have been what he got back to you then.
And I talked about it Friday, and he had talked to a couple of other attorneys about this. And what they base their theory on is the Iowa Code four sixty-eight twenty-seven, the establishment of the drainage district, that the streets and roads were established after the drainage district was, so therefore they are responsible for that. There's other, two other code sections, code sections that apply to it, four sixty-eight forty-three and one oh-eight, that can further substantiate that. I don't know.
You did? So he was, he wasn't aware of any, he's, going, I mean, he didn't, he wasn't aware of any cases where they went against us, and this is the law, called code for how these are set up.
Yeah, that applies to your state highways.
State highways or roads?
Yeah, right, or secondary roads.
I think it's kind of a stupid rule, but it's the codes, the codes we got to follow, I guess. Because really, those people are not banning anything from drainage. There's real farmer's drainage from, and you're banning from it, but the other people are paying for it, but that's the code, I guess we got to go with it.
Well, I'm sorry, you could see where, when it was read, you know, the drainage was there first, to protect the drainage since they were first, they were willing to allow them to go over the top of the drainage, but they weren't willing to sacrifice the fact that they weren't. We're going to, same problem with the railroad, you know, there are going to, yeah.
This does benefit those there in town because it was.
Well, that's the other side of this case.
There's intakes hooked up to it.
And that was.
That's how they always manage, just farm ground.
Right, you're right.
They are allowed to go over the top. So with that, I mean, we're going to have to follow the code, I don't, code, I don't know what, I don't know.
What did you originally put for, when you hired Marshall, did they get up? What, you knew you were going to have to fix the street then, didn't you? I mean, did you not figure that into your, into your, your plan? I mean, when you hire somebody, if you went across C forty-nine down there, pioneer, I mean, it's the same thing, I think.
It's not a.
You don't, you don't establish that as a road repair in that job?
You don't foresee what's going to be needed in that. He thought it was just a short area, Marshall did. And it just kept going and going, and that's when they had to tear up the bottom top to get to it.
If we have a letting for a county drainage district, we include the cost for the road crossings in the bid, but then it's, district is reimbursed by secondary roads for those costs, so.
And part of the process is the design plans and specs, that you have three competitive quotes on, so at that point, the county hasn't put any of those in because they are competitively bid and there's a design on them. I mean, just, you've answered the question from earlier, is, yeah, we pay a hundred percent of those and they're competitively bid and we have a design on them. Similar things we'd expect on the individual side too. Doesn't affect him as much, but it's all the same answer.
Yeah, and this repair, it's like Trish said, it, only involvement we had was stopping by to see how it was going and be sure they were installing things correctly. So there weren't, wasn't really any plans put together because they didn't know the limits of the problems with the tile till they got out there and exposed it.
Well, and it would have been considered repair, and there's so many dollars.
Yes.
I mean, what is the limit?
Um, yes.
So they didn't have a.
Yeah, yeah.
In this case, but.
So what it was, is a plugged pipe, and he dug it up, and he dug further because it was plugged and.
Plugged and broken, I think.
No.
Just plugged, just plugged.
Okay.
Three quarters full.
Okay.
How big a tile was that?
I don't remember how big a tile.
An eight inch?
Yeah, it wasn't very big.
And when Doug started digging, he said, he told me that the county would repair the blacktop. That's what I was told by Doug.
And we came to three meetings, and you all agreed, in those three meetings, with the exception of Bruce, because he wasn't here, that you would fix the street. That's what you told us three times. If you went back on your tapes, like you were supposed to do, that should have been Carl, we talked to Carl the one, and specifically, he said, well, then that's up to us to fix the street. That's where you're under the assumption that you were going to do, because we came to three meetings.
Well, I, I tell you, I know where to call it.
She couldn't find it.
She hasn't found it.
No, I suppose you'd have to go back through.
Every tape?
With Pat, no.
I could probably go back through your agendas and find out what meeting they were at.
Yeah, you can do that.
Yeah, if that was on the agenda.
That's what you're supposed to do.
It would be probably discussed under DD two, I would think, it wasn't just ninety-two.
Well, if I said that, I don't know.
Right.
I wonder why I would.
One of the meetings was right before you guys came to Gilmore City for the town hall meeting on the drainage. Something like, whatever, a week or two before that.
Well, they'd pin it down. At least one of the meetings.
Given that being said, by code, we're not supposed to pay that, so what are we doing in this situation? Do we have a problem?
Well, the only I could look at is if, you know, Marshall dug further than was needed, then I could see where we'd be irresponsible for fixing the street.
Well, if you got a three quarter inch, three quarter inch, uh, pipe that's blocked, three quarter, by the way, you aren't going to stop digging until you get to.
I'm sure he wouldn't dug up any more he needed to.
All right, the other question then is, how much of this is actually on, on this drainage district, ninety-two, and how much is, is it in the city, is it, is it farm ground too, or?
No, it's all in the city.
All the city.
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two gets out into farm ground, but this, the part where the repair was done was all right in town. Pretty much in the middle.
So the only other person that could pay is the people that are in the district, so they would be assessed the dollars and.
Yeah. Yeah, this would be a, a bill paid by the landowners in ninety-two, if that was the ruling.
If that was the ruling.
Yeah.
Then it'd come back to the benefits on this situation.
Yeah.
And there'd still be a bill, you know, for Doug's part that goes back to ninety-two.
Yeah.
Right, right.
Yeah, there's no question on Doug's part on the, the question just comes with the street repair, and that's why you were relying on the drainage attorney to try and get an answer for that.
Well, if we only have one option, you either got to go back and find it on the tape, if we made that comment, or you got to go with what the code says.
But we're still going to have to go with the code. She can go back and look.
Why wasn't this found before then? Now all of a sudden, you're bringing up a code that's been here all along, and three, three meetings, you tell us that you're going to fix it, and nobody looked into the code? I guess that's what's confusing me.
Yeah, well, let's, let's go back and see what was said at that meeting, if we can.
My other question is, if it goes back to the city, how is it distributed between the landowners? Is it just in a specific area if you have to take that on, or what?
What was that? How would you distribute the money? Would you be special assessments, or would it be just general obligation with the city if it was yours? If you fix a street, be general. General, yeah.
Yeah, it's general obligation, I would imagine.
So then whole city pays for it, or just a specific area?
The whole city.
The whole town.
The whole city's going to wind up paying for it.
That's the tragic thing about it, because the whole city doesn't benefit, just a few people benefit.
But that, what would you do about it?
Well, Humboldt County's side.
Yeah.
Right. Let's say a secondary road, you know, everybody else pays for a new secondary road. Some of the same people are going to pay either way, it's just we go over more people. If we went against code, I just don't think we're going to go against code, even if.
No, you don't.
The distinction isn't going to, it's still going to come back.
That's why, that's why I say, there's really no change in what you can do with it.
Yeah, I think you have to rely on your drainage attorney's opinion to avoid trouble. I want to read through this again, because I, I didn't concentrate on this section at all. I didn't think about it being established before the city and.
You're going to have the same problem if you go against code here today. You're going to have the same problem with the railroad when you go to court.
Yeah, yeah.
You can't argue this, and you can't back away from what the code is, or we're going to be. I think the upfront answer, everybody has to realize it's going to have to be taken panel by the, as the code states, and how you collect it is going to be up to the city, I guess, at this point. Doesn't matter if even. No matter what she's telling you, then it's not going to.
Yeah.
The code's clear.
And that, yeah.
And it doesn't matter who's first.
Well, that's where you said something about the district being established or something, must have been in your conversation with Doug, that he said something about that. Okay.
Well, unless the board sees anything different, I think, I don't know what else we can do. I don't think we can do it.
No, I don't think you're going to be able to, even if you want to.
So when you let a bid out for somebody to do a tiling job, and you're going to cross a road, you don't take into consideration the repair on the road?
We, like a drainage district project, yes, we take it into account as, as an item in the bid, but then the secondary roads reimburses the district for the expenses of going through the road.
Or we leave it open, or we get stuck with fixing it a year later.
Yeah, yeah. So it's included, but payment is still comes from secondary roads on the, anything in the rural sections.
Or the state.
Or the state, yeah, the state pays.
Or the cities.
Yeah.
Cities, and your new tile going through there, DD2.
DD, uh, DOT paid for the big tile line out there by ICAP.
Yes, yes, they did.
Multi dollars.
Yeah, they paid for the, the crossing highway on DD2, Main here, the one by Russ Neves, they paid for a very deep, uh, boring under that one, because they won't let us open cut, of course, because that'd be under traffic, so. So, yeah, there's quite a bit of history there, a lot of history there, actually.
Well, I'll move on, I don't have any better answers.
I think next time you are contracted to do digging like in cities, they ought to be notified, not to let the, uh, cities or landlords that pay not do a fix of the street. If Doug was under the impression that the town would be repairing it.
Well, everybody here was, too, because like I said...
That's what I was kind of wondering.
We came to three meetings, and I know, Carl and Jerry...
When we say fix it, did we mean just fix the tower, or did, you know?
Yeah, it's going to come down to, how was it exactly said, and, yeah. You might be able to find a one, if it was just one or two weeks before the meeting, but before that, it's going to be hard to come up with these.
I've looked.
She's been looking.
Yeah.
Through a lot of them, and it's hard to, anytime you had anything in DD2, I...
Voices are clear either on some of that, isn't it?
Well, that's tough.
Okay. What else, Rick?
Uh, I kind of updated you on 125, as far as wrapping that up. There's still some private tiling to be done, um, Section 29, Scott Faro property, he's been asking about approximate assessments, and I hesitate to give those, so then it's probably going to go up, because their ground needed it, and they had two ag wells that they'll be charged for, um, so. I have the DD2 reclassification with me today, I'm going to leave it for Trish to, and we'll call Pat and Brent and get them in here to sign it. I'm going to leave you with the final adjustments, um, that were made. Basically, after we met the last time, the only adjustments we had to make was, I had allowed half the cost to a small parcel for an ag well closure, and in discussion, we agreed we'd charge them, we're going to charge every parcel with a ag well $2,300, just as...
As a base.
As a base for extra benefit for closing that well. We used some averages, we first adjusted 25% on each parcel that had one, but that varied so much, because, you know, if somebody had a big assessment...
A big piece of land.
Big piece of land, yeah, 25% was a lot. But the range was like from 1,900 to 2,600 or something, when I looked back, figured it.
So you were in the middle and...
Yes, yeah, we felt that was fair, because there's benefit, there's extra benefit to each party that has an ag well being closed by this project, so.
This is a lesson we'll have to look at.
This is it, the commissioner said, we feel comfortable with this, um, glad to discuss it with anybody, um, and said, basically...
I can write final on this one?
No, you can write final subject to hearing, or something.
You got the cost breakout on the end, so you have to...
Yeah, that's right, that's right, so. And the town ones are expensive, but they're about half of what they used to be, um, because of the savings there, uh, to get them back in the proper range, um, you'll find five or six parcels that maybe would, I've got a drawing with the cost break on it, other than this one that has the final adjustment on it. Um, once in a while, the one with the ag well looks a little high, but when you take out the ag well cost, very comparable to the ones around them. That's why we felt that was fair, so. Um, this isn't on the agenda, you probably, you'll set in, will you continue, did you continue it, but not to a specific time?
I don't remember.
I can't even remember.
I'll probably not notice this, so it doesn't matter.
Okay, that's what I was thinking you were doing, yeah.
And we're redoing it.
So, so you would be asked to set a date, and I'll leave these...
To get a code.
Very, very good.
All right.
Oh, we, we looked at every one of these, um...
The adduction, I suppose that's, every part we need to...
Yes, yes, yes.
So how would that be? How will you do the adduction, because they have prior?
Well, we'll adjust their points based on the acres coming in, and then, so you'll get a new printout with, when the adduction is completed. And that will be done in time to have them included in their original levy you're going to make, yes.
And they're all, they don't understand that?
Yes, yes, yes. Most of this is because they asked to be, yeah.
That's what I thought.
I think all of it is, so. Yeah, yeah, I know.
And levy for this one.
Paid only September.
September this fall.
I was pleasantly pleased with looking at our total engineering in 125, because I thought with the reclass and things that we might be pushing it, but we're, we're a good 40,000 under, so. The, the bad part of all that is that when we went through all the invoices for engineering, we discovered that there's several that have been taken out of the 125 fund, and they should have been out of DD2, so. Trish and I are going to go over that yet this morning, and, yeah. And we're pretty sure the reason that happened is because the very beginning of that, it was called 125. So, we still have the same project number on it all, but it still said 125.
Separated by separate...
Yes, and we have, I have that list with me today. And Trish says it's a transfer that she will make, so it can all be corrected, so.
All right.
This is the billing that was done, I don't know, where is it, joint district 171, and we are not controlled, so we're just signing off as...
Okay. Let me check up.
I've got multiple copies.
I guess we'll need to get, talk to you about commissioners on six, Main and Ranch B, we'll want to get those assigned. Dick Neves is the logical one, he wouldn't have any interest out there beyond that, then we'll be looking for a second. We do have that, that's the one where we're looking at tile northwest of Thor, major tile improvements, where a landlord bought a lot of land that needed tile, too, that's all part of our discussion. We have that reclassification report ready to meet with commissioners, because you did not want to proceed with the improvements until you had the reclassification done, so people would know what they'd expect to pay, yeah, so. We're close, I think it'll take a couple of meetings with the commissioners at least, but then we should be able to submit that one. Okay. We'll probably start coming with some of these smaller, some of these sub-districts, too, probably within a month, bringing some of those reclasses in. Those are essentially done, again, go through meetings with commissioners, but they've been assigned.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got anything else, yeah?
The state is not used to this.
Any correspondence from the railroad, you know, and so we work there, and then the chain, we're working through that.
Yes, right, right. Uh, it's nothing new, anyway. You've gotten, you've got a whole staff that went to Doug a while ago.
A lot of that, came back with some denials and stuff, whatever.
Yeah, because we got, I, a while ago, I talked to Doug about what else he needed from us, and we pulled that all together and gave that to Trish, and then she put, he said, get it to Trish, and she'll get me everything then, so, lucky her, yeah, so.
All right.
That all went.
Nothing else?
Maybe gardenage.
The most gardenage, a second?
Sorry.
All third?
Thanks, gentlemen.
Yeah.
Yep, absolutely, we will keep that moving. Yep, absolutely.
All right, thanks, Trish. We've got an extra couple that... All right.
Ready?
All right, second session, Melissa is waiting for us. She's getting to be a regular visitor here, too much.
I just have, as you know, we've been discussing the Child Care Center for a while, and it came to our attention that the 28E agreement that we would enter into would likely require a payment in the fiscal year that you're doing budget considerations for. So the purpose of my visit today is really just to request that you consider that $7,000 in your budget preparation for the debt service payment on the Child Care Center. So, I don't have anything formal to give you, I think that 28E construction needs to be with the appropriate entities, and so we'll make sure that as we go through those discussions, we have someone present, we're certainly not going to draft that and just present it to you, we want you to be part of that process. So, there isn't anything to sign, nothing to formalize right now, other than that amount for the budget consideration. So, if you have any questions, I'm certainly happy to answer them. Right now, it was just to come and say, hey, while you're thinking about your budget, could you be, could you be mindful of that amount for the debt service payment?
Which is $7,000 for five years?
It is, um, for 20.
20, yeah.
Yep, um, that's the rough amount that we've requested, certainly it depends upon the interest rate, and right now, we have already presented it to the city of Humboldt, the hospital, the school, the supervisors, and then Dakota City meets on February 11th. So we'll have all of the entities formally requested, so they'll be mindful of that budget amount, so.
So, from my understanding now, if everybody's on board, this is the worst, one of the entities said no, what happens then?
Um, there would only be one that would, in theory, have the option of doing that, there's, there's only one that we haven't gone to yet.
Okay.
Um, and, and what I would imagine that would happen is, we would just probably fundraise for that remaining portion, I think.
But at this point, you feel pretty good about where you're at, as far as your response to your previous?
Yeah, yep, for sure, absolutely, yep. And, and part of that, Jerry, is because, you know, we're, we're, our intention is to borrow 500,000, we still have to fundraise almost 900, so when you look at that, at the amount, yeah, yeah.
So that's complete.
Correct, and, and the reason that we don't have anything for you to sign, anything to formally act upon, is because if we don't have the 900, the 500's irrelevant, right?
Which makes sense, why get it out of the...
Right, right. So, um, if we just, as we were having the conversation internally at the board level, it was kind of like, uh-oh, wait, though, if, you know, when we do get to that point, we could have a payment due in the fiscal year that you're making your budget considerations for, so.
That'd be in the 16, 17 budget, right?
So, our, like I said, if, if we don't, if, for whatever reason, we don't fundraise the 900, we don't need the 500, so, we'll work on that first. But, I just wanted to, to reach out to you and make sure that we made that formal request, so, if you have any additional questions, certainly you can get over to me, Carl is your representative on that board, and, and we'll continue to look forward here.
Okay.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, excellent.
All right. Good. Are you ready?
Yeah.
So, are you trying to...
I still apologize, because I didn't bring five packets, I brought four.
Here.
Okay, I brought four.
Okay. Dave and I will share one, and you guys...
I'm ahead, man, you don't have to be down here.
Well, I knew you were supposed to one, because I did look that up.
Yeah, you've got to take out one, we'll share with Rick.
I was going to say, I probably got several copies in my vehicle.
I got them memorized.
You must be our new board member?
I am the new.
Okay, all right. Okay, well, I'm Shelley Zabel, and I'm the provincial supervisor at Community and Family Resources. Um, today, I'm just going to go through the services at the top of the sheet that we've provided in 2016, and then what we planned for, for 2017, and then I'd like to cover some of the Iowa youth survey data for Humboldt County, very quickly, though. We've done some presentations to service clubs with prescription and over the counter drug abuse. Um, we did, and this is the first time in many, many years that we have done school-based programming, so we did Too Good For Drugs at sixth grade, and there were three sections, I, I taught some of that, too. Um, actually, there were three sections on two different days, so there were six total sections, yeah. Um, we did some one-time presentations for middle school and high school students with Heather Nielsen on marijuana, alcohol, and impairment. Um, one of the grants that I wrote for, very, very small, Love Our Kids is what it's called, and that would be the, it's medication safety, and that's in your packet. Um, and it just fits really well with what we already are doing. You see that 60,000 kids a year go to the emergency room because they've accidentally ingested someone's medication, so, pretty important. Um, we're still doing some gambling prevention presentations, one of the flyers in your packets should be about Money Smart. I don't currently have anything going on in Humboldt, but we, um, it's a curriculum by the FDIC, we know that people that are involved with substances sometimes also become cross-addicted and get involved with gambling, so part of our grant is to provide that education. Um, of course, we do a gambling newsletter, I think I put an example of one in your packets. Uh, we did make visits to restaurants and bars that served alcohol and offered the tips, it's a responsible beverage service training, just to kind of make sure that their servers understand how they should be IDing, um, what to look for in an ID, and then also how, how to politely decline service to someone who's already had too much to drink. Um, and then we, Humboldt is one of the counties that we do quite a bit of workplace services for supervisors and staff, just signs and symptoms and how to handle that kind of a thing. Um, with fiscal year 2017 budget preparations, we're making a formal request for the $7,200 that we've had, or asked for in the past several years, as long as I've been there anyway. Um, we will continue with all of the current services that we are doing in 2017, anyway, that is the plan, this is our year that we will be... would like to see, someone wants those services here in Humboldt. Um, and then we also have Money Smart for Youth, older adults, and then the Stack it and, or Stack Deck and Bank It are both youth curriculums for, about gambling. Um, I want to add to our comprehensive work plan, marijuana education, and when we cover some of these numbers, you'll see some of the reasons that I think it'll be important. And then rather than offering the TIPS, the Responsible Beverage Service Training, I think we're going to see about doing risk assessments for bars and restaurants, since we didn't have a lot of people that wanted the TIPS training. Um, it's expensive to keep the certification up and we didn't have that many people that were interested in it. And then if the Love Our Kid grant is available, we will write for that again. Okay. Does anyone have any questions so far?
Your risk assessment for bars and restaurants, has that shown their liability? Talk to them about that, or what is that?
Well, actually, the TIPS would, can, not all insurance companies will do it, but a lot of times, if they check with their insurance company, if they have all their staff trained and then they want to keep that in place with new staff coming onboard, they will reduce the dram shop insurance.
Okay.
But we, we couldn't convince anyone to take it, and one of the barriers is that bar owners don't want to call people in and pay for their time to take the class. The other competing factor that we have is Iowa Alcohol Beverage Division offers an online training.
Oh.
Which, and that's at no cost, however, for a first time person who's going to be serving face to face is always nicer, you know? Okay.
Shelley, you probably don't know off hand, but all these figures given for Humboldt County, how do we pair with, compare with other counties as far as use each and violations and that kind of thing?
I just did Wright County.
Okay.
So, um, Wright County, uh, I think was a little bit higher than you guys were. I brought the trend data. Um, some of this data is going to be all the way back from 2008, averaged out then through 2014. Um, they're gonna show it to us every two years, but some of it is only the last two surveys. So, um, marijuana use and perception of harm, as far as whether kids think it's risky and bad for them, we're seeing, you know, they don't think it's risky. And of course, they don't receive so much in the media right now about all of it.
When the government allows a couple of ways to use it.
Right.
Don't cut the, tell the kids it's.
Yeah, it's okay if you're in the sector.
It's okay, like you're in Colorado and California, you can, they're smarter than we are.
Yeah, it's increasingly difficult when we go to the DUI classes. Um, we offer DUI, um, some of you probably already know this, we offer it in both the Ames location, and then we offer it with Iowa Central and Fort Dodge, but, um, we see more, more people being picked up for the marijuana use and driving under the influence in the Ames area, of course, the university plays a big role in that. But there is, basically, you have to present the evidence and the research and then move along, because there's no convincing a lot of them. But, yeah, it's very difficult, and the kids are picking up on that and the trend data kind of shows us that, so. Okay, so I'll quickly go through these and then you guys can ask any questions that you have. This is the very first year the Iowa Youth Survey has presented us with county trend data, so it's kind of nice. Um, let's see, for the first one, percentage of students who reported drinking at least one drink of alcohol in the past 30 days, um, we saw some, a little bit of an increase in eighth grade, 11th grade, we had a decrease, a nice decrease. Um, and then overall, if you look at all grades, and this one would be just the 2012 to 14, we did see a nice decrease. For some of these, in lots of the other counties, we are seeing earlier use, so we're seeing our sixth graders report more use. So kind of watch as we go through. I've been looking at a lot of numbers, so I can't tell you off the top of my head what, which ones it was for. Now, this one goes from 2008 to 2014. We did see an increase in sixth grade, and I'm just looking, um, sometimes the numbers bounce around a little bit, so I'm just looking from 2008 to 2014, when I compare those two numbers, where we're at. Um, we saw 11th grade, this was, I was amazed at this, but overall, by 2014, you had a 20% decrease, so that's really good. Um, and then all grades, you did have a nice decrease there, too, 13.7, down to 5.7, so it is very good. It is. The 20% is pretty impressive, so. Okay, on this next one is the percentage of students who reported using marijuana in the past 30 days. Um, keep in mind that this is only 2012 and 14 survey data. We saw a little bit of a decrease, a tenth of a percent in sixth grade. Um, we did see a 4.2% increase in eighth grade, so in 2012, we had literally zero reporting that they'd used it. Um, in eighth grade, we had 5.8 to 9.8, so a 5% increase. So those aren't, those aren't huge, they're not like the 20% decrease for alcohol, but it's nothing that we want to see get started, because like I said, the more they're exposed to the media and all the other states around us. I went to a conference in November in Seattle and they have just passed it, and like we have the alcohol beverage division, they have the marijuana and alcohol division, so it's kind of weird.
You'd also see that when they come out of sixth grade, they're probably in more of a cocoon.
Yeah.
Atmosphere in their schools, when they go to the middle school, to the high school, they're exposed to the older kids and.
Yeah. Yeah, it, middle school is a tough transition, both as they enter and then as they enter the high school years, so, and we know that those are the times that are, they're at highest risk. Okay, so, um, on to gambling a little bit, and this is again 2012 and 14 data, the percentage of students that reported having ever bet or gambled for money or possessions, um, we saw in sixth grade, a big decrease. And we don't think about sixth graders gambling, but gambling is considered, um, any time that you risk something of value, uh, you're risking something of value with an unknown outcome. So it could be, I'll bet you $5, I can beat you to the other end of the building, or anything like that. Okay, eighth grade, we, we had a little increase, 26.9 to 33.6, and then 11th grade, we saw a decrease again. So again, you can kind of look, you see some of that sixth and eighth grade stuff happening there. All right. Okay, this next one is about youth suicide, so the percentage of students who reported that they seriously thought about killing themselves in the past 12 months, always a concern, youth suicide is, um, we see an increase in the younger youth and a decrease in the 11th graders. Not huge jumps, but, well, it is a big decrease, it's about 7% for the 11th grade, so.
Sounds like our older kids are getting their acts together.
They are, we hope so by the time they're getting us there, don't we?
Are you able to get into school more than you used to?
Well, this is the first year that we've done the sixth graders, and we did a little bit at the, um, middle school and high school levels last year, but like one-time presentations, and we know that they're not as effective as the longer-term ones. This next one is probably the, the most concerning, and I don't know why I didn't print off all of your information on the question, but the question is, would you be more or less popular, meaning respected or cool, with other students in your school if you smoked marijuana? Um, pretty significant increases in the thought perceptions that, that they're gonna be more well-liked, things like that. Um, even in sixth grade, we see about a 5%, eighth grade, again, about 5%. Um, the 11th graders, we do see 9.7 to 25.6, so that's pretty significant. Um, overall, about what, 7, 7 or 8% increase. So again, the media is playing a physical.
It's something new, so the numbers, you know, excuse me.
Yeah. It's gonna be interesting to see what happens with the, yeah. Yeah, and you're right, sometimes it does kind of, yep, we get a bump and then a decrease. Um, each grade on this next one, uh, looks like the schools are doing a really nice job with, um, handling the bullying, which can get way out of hand. Um, you saw decreases for all grades in the, you know, that, um, people are being bullied or not bullied, we saw decreases. Um, and then this other one is feeling safe at school, made nice gains when you look at the, sixth grade was down a little bit, but nice gains in all the other areas.
How big a number do you get there? Do you get the, far to the end, how many, how do you get their survey?
Um, the state actually puts it together, and they have some help from the University of Iowa, I believe, consortium, and, um, the schools now, this last year, the 14 data was the first year that they did it online, they used Survey Monkey. Um, of course, they always are looking for the least expensive way to do it, and it was on the computer. Um, the schools have the option of opting in or out. So most schools, and I did not specifically look at this one, um, most schools participate. Um, in the past, the schools that have chosen not to, uh, might have given reasons like, and I'm not saying Humboldt, because I don't know if they participated or didn't in the past, but, you know, we have lots of testing and, and benchmarking and things like that, and we don't really have time for one more thing. We've also seen it where there's consolidation talks, that one district may not want their data to be portrayed.
Yeah.
Right. So that's always a factor, um, if we, we always wonder about it, I guess, anyway. Okay, um, feeling safe at school, looks like nice gains on that one. Um, this one is a little bit concerning when you look at the 11th. On the next one, the percentage of students agreeing people living in their home have a serious alcohol or drug problem. In 2008, we were at 17.2. We had a little bump down in 10, a little bump up, but then between 12 and 14, we go from 16.1% to 24.1%. So kids are feeling like, and you know that, I mean, when you look at the other numbers for the lower grades, kids in 11th grade are gonna have a much greater understanding of what's going on in their homes. Okay. This next one, it says page 26 at the bottom, um, percentage of students that reported one parent or guardian, always often, or sometimes go to school activities that they're involved in, um, this is usually a pretty big deal, parent-child connectedness, but we did see decreases at every grade level in parent participation, I would imagine, because we're seeing more people work. Um, and this last one, uh, percentage of students who reported their parents or guardians feeling that it would be wrong for them to smoke marijuana. Um, we're seeing that, uh, fewer kids are feeling like their parents feel that it's wrong. These questions almost sometimes feel like they're about backwards to explain, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a trick question from the.
It is, because then you have to try to look at it, you have to be in the right mindset, but, you know, we're seeing that, that.
Yeah.
Yep, it is.
It is.
So do you guys have any questions for me?
Well, those numbers look good, so that's.
They do.
I mean, that's encouraging, we always want to do better, but at least we're in the right direction in this case.
Right, right.
Do you think the counties have social hosting ordinances versus those that don't?
Um, that's still pretty, pretty new for a lot of communities. Um, we are seeing some people be convicted of it, and the local social hosting, um, right now, we're working with that in Webster County. We are trying to get some of that passed, but not a lot of activity on it. There is a loophole, though, because the people that are 19, 20, and 21, if they're the ones providing, um, let's see, how does it go? There's a loophole where some people are excluded as far as their ages from, from being charged with social host, so.
So you guys, and I'm speaking, our deputy here, our sheriff's department runs our DARE program, do you guys have programs like that, that you go into schools and will run a six, eight, 10-week programmer?
That's what the Too Good for Drugs is.
That's what it is.
Yeah.
That's the name of, rather than DARE.
Yeah. And, um, I did put in your packets, we have someone new that just started working with us in October, her name is Cory Keller, is a female, she said, "I get that a lot," where people think that I'm a guy, but, um, she started with us, she has some nonprofit experience working, um, in Chicago with homeless, and so she's the one that's going to be doing a lot of this. We kind of did some shifting around because she lives in Pocahontas.
Oh.
So it's much closer for her to be doing that. But yeah, we do the, the longer-term programs and we would be open to any of those curriculum that are evidence-based.
Well, we just, our deputies are spread so thin anymore, we're trying to figure.
Well, if one retired, that's a good question.
And that's the, that's a perfect question.
Okay, okay.
So I think there'd be some interest there.
Yeah, we may.
Might be a good idea.
Stepping around and having, seeing, get in contact, or whoever get in contact, because we have a deputy that is considering.
Retirement.
Yeah, he's been to DARE programs for several years.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, and you're lucky to have that even, because a lot of counties, DARE is, yeah, they don't have it anymore, so, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Good luck, Shelley.
Thanks, bye.
I'm gonna grab a cup of coffee.
Why don't you?
Anybody want one?
I gotta go get one too.
I'm gonna get, walk around a little bit. Cause you're getting more stuck.
Get like Rick.
Oh, man, you don't want to have what I had.
Thank you.
You know, here's your pour, another cup.
Well, that is hot, ooh.
It takes a thought here. You guys got.
We're going to roll that up now.
What's it be, I don't see the other office.
Little car went downstairs.
Yeah, they give us.
Floating.
Yeah.
I guess I could start with telling a joke too.
When you shut the camera off.
I think his problem is I can never remember them. Again, can't remember names, Peggy, and I can't remember jokes.
Well, you bought that book.
Yeah, no, that was cut off by the book.
Oh, I bought that book. Oh, and Jen, I already had it, uh, through the library, by the way.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The Spine, when my daughter got it on, uh, Amazon, she got a, a used copy of it, so I laid it on the counter, and my wife started reading it, and she's like, two chapters into it, she goes, "It's really good," so.
No, you have to read it.
No, yeah. Well, my biggest problem is when I'm in the trunk, I just read and then I pull ahead and start reading again, it's like, learn with my voice.
Oh, that was good, you remembered and read it already.
Yeah, I said about half a good page, man. What makes it wrong?
Remember he's read one, there is no.
Oh, okay. Hello, good morning, gentlemen, Mr. Carl and Peggy. Uh, the, the only agenda item I have is approved quote for Humboldt County Engineers' Office Remodel Phase One, and what we've looked at for several years and started this probably three years ago, uh, last year, we attempted to get contractors interested in doing this part of the remodel and had none, so we, uh, did do it, reloaded it again. Uh, we had four contractors we contacted and actually got two proposals, uh, for remodeling. And what this remodel does is adds. uh, we've looked at for several years and started this, uh, probably three years ago. Uh, last year, we attempted to get contractors interested in doing this part of the remodel and had none. So, we, uh, did do it, reloaded it again. Uh, we had four contractors we contacted and actually got two proposals, uh, for remodeling. And what this remodel does is adds on to what we started with food pantry, uh, where we're, uh, insulating, studying and insulating that exterior wall on our building, uh, and, uh, adding insulation, uh, to it and, uh, in spursing it up so much. Uh, contrary to what, uh, the press are asking me earlier this morning, it isn't because of what I've seen down in the LEC is what motivated this. But, uh, we are, our intent here are to, uh, remodel the front portion of the office, move our office manager out of the little cubicle area, out into the open, uh, into the east side. If, this would be phase one, uh, in that it's just the walls and a little electrical. Um, uh, the rest of it in this remodel would be carpet, carpet and office furniture for that front portion, so. But, we had two proposals. I didn't wanna go that far until Carl got here. Uh, one from Bertie and Son is fourteen thousand five hundred with an anticipated start date of February fifteenth. The other proposal was eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars, uh, with a March twenty, uh, two thousand sixteen start. Uh, so, we did get two back out of the four contractors we talked to.
Who is that second group?
Grumback. Grumback. And, uh, and I would propose that we'd.
Got a couple new ones also?
Yeah, it includes, I, I guess I touched on.
Yeah, we talked about that at a.
Um, we did, uh, uh, it's, uh, build the exterior walls. In other words, we're insulating, uh, putting stud wall and putting, uh, pulling off the, whatever you wanna call that wall board, putting stud wall and end up drywalling and painting, uh, on the exterior walls. Um, two exterior windows with sliders and screens. There's four windows there. Uh, the two middle ones, we're gonna just put sliders in so we can operate them and at least have some air movement. And then we're adding some electrical outlets. When I started, uh, sixteen years ago now, here in March, um, we had one circuit running to this entire front section so that if we ran the copy machine and something else, uh, was lit up at the time, we'd blow the breakers. But, well, with this, we're adding six new outlets, a phone jack, and we're moving the lights. The lights are still set up to what it was built in, uh, where the switch locations are, uh, with, uh, Stosgau. And, uh, we're moving the light switches back to the entry, uh, entry side. So, there is a little bit of electrical with it, uh, and it's mostly peel the current walls and put, uh, JIP walls back up and painted this portion of it. And again, to follow, you know, would be, uh, carpet and some furniture. Carpet and/or, um, I'm not sure, maybe that front piece, uh, where you go in through the entry, maybe it should be something, uh.
Some hard surface there.
Some kinda hard surface, something that's, um, uh, more, uh, subject to the track.
They would possibly make a path from the front to the back that's hard surface and carpet off to the sides of that.
Right, and, and I, I don't see anything, uh, you know, the carpet minimally would be, uh, on the south side in the vicinity where the office manager, where Sue will be, uh, to carpet that area. Her old office, it'd be nice to carpet that, uh, and we'd like to carpet, uh, the other offices. We did Dave Powell's office when we modeled, when Doug was in it, we carpeted that. Otherwise, the balance of the carpet in this building is the original carpet. Uh, so, it is.
When you rip the chips and off, are you planning on re-insulating it all or is it all fairly sound?
Uh, what we'll do is we'll leave the blanket on. And what we did with food pantry is they just had pegboard on it in the backside because that was parts room at the time.
Right.
And we pulled the pegboard off, left that, uh, uh, blanket insulation that was in the wall, put a stud wall on the inside and then put three and a half inches in the stud wall. Jipped it, painted it and whatever.
Right. I didn't know how sound it was in there, if it was warm enough or.
Um, the, the east side.
Would be better to do it then, yeah.
Nah, I, the east side of this, it still has single pane windows where the entry used to be, where the awning was, that's now, um, the garage area. That's all single pane and single pane door. They used to be able to get large pieces of equipment into the showroom. That will be all closed up. The south windows, however, are thermal pane. They're at least two, two pane, but they're in operables and, and operable windows would be preferred. Uh, I know that, uh, in times, we oughta air it out a little bit.
Sounds good. There's something you've been talking about for a long time. I think it's much overdue, Paul.
Yeah, and, and part of it is to just availability of contractor. We talk about it with drainage. We talk about it, whatever. I mean, to build a new project, it's much preferred as to get into a remodel project. Uh, the issue was raised, uh, on parking out. Uh, we do have a stoop problem. We remodeled and put the, uh, the entrance in with the canopy. We do have concrete to the stoop area and we had questions on, on, uh, what it would take to get at least a parking area paved. And I ran some numbers and talked to some contractors last week. And to get a, uh, hundred and twenty foot wide is the width of the building there, twenty-four foot deep, either asphalt or concrete, would be roughly fifteen thousand dollars. Uh, and both would be similar cost. So, uh, a five inch concrete, uh, or six inch, uh, five or six inch concrete or asphalt's in the fifteen thousand dollar range. Uh, talked about it and that's all the further we've gone at this point. But, uh, that would be with the county cornering it out and adding some kinda base. And, uh, it appears if asphalt, it's a little over a hundred tons of asphalt and it's what price you wanna throw at it. If it's a, if it's a hundred and forty, it's fifteen thousand.
I just, I was just looking at the front of that building when we were out there last week. Uh, are you concerned about a little drainage issues there? It's pretty dang flat.
Uh, and that's where we always fight it, uh, and yes.
That's why.
The, the short answer is yes, because, uh, we have to try to cut snow down on a rugged winter to make sure we don't have water running back to us. Because the building's too low.
If there's any way we can get some drainage pipe in your intakes to take care of some of that, cause when you put your cement down, it just, water runs in and.
Now, that's one of the big concerns on putting anything hard and fast in there is to, to develop site drainage and to get, we already are coming down off the stoop and we're losing a tenth or so from the stoop. And starting at that point and promoting drainage, it could be an issue. And, uh, we've looked at it briefly. We do have some fall, uh, to the southwest and to the northwest. On the north side of the building, a number of years ago, we already cut, bladed, cut from the northwest corner of the new building all the way across the west back of the lot line. It, we have some overland flow running clear back to an intake on a, on a main, uh, back in that corner now. Uh, but no, it is flat. The original site was cut on the east side and filled on the west side. And they cut it and, and in my opinion, it's, uh, cut too, it's built too low. I mean, you can't ever fix a structure once it's too low. You can always fix it when it's too high. And we couldn't, and that was an issue when we built the east building, is we'd like to get it as high as possible, yet we're the neighbor to our east, uh, we cannot dump the water on them either. So, we were careful in what elevation we were to promote drainage there.
Looking for some tiling or intakes and things like that to help with the drainage.
There is tile around and some intakes might, uh, we could add to. There's perimeter tile on the building right there in the front, all the way around. All of them's tiled. As a matter of fact, tile runs diagonally underneath the building, the original tile.
Okay.
That doesn't scare.
You've got options.
It does me, but if that doesn't scare you.
There's a lot of buildings like that.
Not so good.
I still like to pursue a little bit on that concrete bit.
Perfect.
You can find out. We got a little bit of cost there, but seems even feasible with the drainage situation away there.
No, it's feasible. And we looked at it a number of years ago and, and we can develop drainage. It's not a lot of drainage, but we can develop drainage and get rid of the surface water. Right now, with what you look at, we have, very seldom, we have ponding in that vicinity. So, if we maintain something where we're at, we know it can work, but we just don't have a lot to work with.
All right, back to these proposals. So, you wanna make a motion on these? I think we're ready to move on this project.
I'll make a motion for the remodel phase one for our Grumback construction. I second that motion.
And we have a second, and that's for the amount of eleven thousand six hundred and sixty-two dollars.
That was March.
March twentieth estimated start date.
That's after he gets to my house, right?
Yeah. Any other discussion? Seeing that, all okay?
All right.
All right. Matter of fact, on that, this is just to, to get the wheels in motion before we buy any flooring or before we consider any flooring or anything, we had to get, uh, the first part of this done.
Yeah, I think we were able to work out something on the drainage. You're sort of saving a lot of rain and tear on your new remodel job too. Cause it's really pretty low out there and pretty crappy for visitors to come in, as well as you guys come every day through it. See what, see what can work out for you.
No, I know, I know we can make it. Uh, it can happen. We just haven't done it. It hasn't, uh, I mean, we have a lot of issues to repair and fix and whatever and, uh, we haven't sent it up the priority poll, but if that's what you're sending it up the poll, I'll certainly pursue it. Especially if Peg starts out funding it, that'd be better yet. So, nobody mentioned that, did they Peggy?
No.
So.
Your excuse.
Been nice knowing you, Paul.
Yeah.
No, we had to fix the roof first. Now, some of these other things maybe could get.
No, no, uh, we do have, and as we continue to maintain that, you heard, uh, we are gonna pursue putting new corry back, back in the maintenance side of this thing. And, uh, uh, we didn't wanna replace the heat until we put the roof. We put a new roof on it a couple of years ago. Uh, we've, uh, modified the lights in the whole system. Uh, I can see, uh, overhead doors in the near future up there. I mean, it's, it's got some years on it. It's the late seventies and, uh.
Well, we tried to buy that building at the school, but the county got it first. We could make a bus drive out of that. It'd been perfect for us. Then you wouldn't have to worry about it. But you got there first.
It's always been low.
I mean, that's our building or is it because Rocket's been added?
Probably both.
Um, it, it is just low. There isn't a lot of fall between the front door and the road ditch. I mean, it's pretty flat. I mean, and if you look at, uh, west door to the northwest, we have some fall, but the east door to, before we built the building to the east, I mean, it's, it's cut. I mean, that, uh, the east side of our lot, I think they cut three foot out of it. Used to be a ridge there, but they cut it and leveled it. And it's built probably on the order of six to nine inches too low, in my opinion. If you had her up a little bit more, um, you'd get positive drainage away from the building. It's not as bad as Bode's Original Shop was. Bode's Original Shop, we'd run a sump pump in the spring to get the water out of the shop.
Okay.
Paul, thanks.
Cory, you're up.
There's a snow out there, you guys.
Nope, not yet.
Good morning.
Morning.
Come on, take off my coat.
If you're gonna make the struggle.
Yeah, I mean, he, he did meetings.
I do a bit.
No, I just.
I'll cheer with you.
Take mine off.
Everybody got the pertinent information here?
Yep.
Uh, last, uh, last Thursday, I had a meeting, annual meeting, uh, about the raises and, and how we wanted to handle attorney, auditor, recorder, sheriff supervisors and treasurer. Um, it came to conclusion, the max raises, um, for the attorney and sheriffs, uh, the recommended max is four percent, um, just to keep us, uh, competitive with the outside market and with, uh, other counties. Um, we decided that they needed four percent. Um, all of the positions, auditor, recorder, supervisor and treasurer, we recommended an increase of three percent. Um, but one, one thing that, that did change a little bit of the recorder and the treasurer, um, for two thousand fifteen, we had made an adjustment and, and actually increased the auditor by another thousand. So, what we're trying to do now is make up for, uh, what we think maybe was a small miscalculation on our part. Um, and so, well, the recorder and the treasurer, their raise will now be enough to equal that of the current pay of the auditor, if that makes sense. So, instead of the three percent, I think it was, uh, a little higher than three percent for the recorder and treasurer. So, that way, we get the auditor, recorder and treasurer all on the same page and all on the same paid schedule. Um, felt like, uh, I guess the year before that maybe we, not, no, wasn't a mistake, but maybe we made a, a miscalculation there in, in how we wanted to handle, um, the auditor, uh, Peggy was, we gave her a bump because she has to handle, uh, um, the voting process. And she puts in some extra time on, what we probably didn't account for was the extra time those officers put in voluntarily and, and then, uh, um, and Peggy has also compensated for overtime with time off too, which we probably didn't take into account nearly enough. But, um, you know, we wanna make sure everyone knows they're appreciated and, uh, and, uh, didn't want, and wanted to really avoid the, any sort of interoffice, uh, intermingling or entanglements that we could come across there with that. So, uh, figured out in hindsight, the best way to do that was to get all three on the same schedule. So, that's our recommended increase. Um, any questions?
So, let's pretend you had to be adjusted then. So, they come up the same numbers?
Correct. That's the be.
It's like five percent really though. That's what, bring it up on it. Bring the recorder and the treasurer up. I used to go in five percent times, then I get fifty-three, six, seven, seven.
Um, I haven't done the math on that part.
I just started selling. And then five percent, that's fifty-three thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ten cents, so it's five percent.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, is that for a recommendation of those blank spots then?
Mm-hmm.
Left open?
Yep.
Left them open for the calculations.
We left them open for the calculations.
That's the way we had a motion, let's work.
Yep. We wanted to do three percent plus, plus whatever they're short.
Okay, that's why that's.
Yep, we didn't wanna put a blanket percentage on that.
Lots more.
Attorney, county attorney's rate, so it's the sheriff's rate, right? Doesn't he make a percentage of that?
No, no, they're separate.
Just his deputies.
Just his deputies, or? I thought he had something to do with the attorney.
The Iowa code, the attorney has a, I don't remember how, he has to make a percentage of the district judge.
Yeah, like between forty-five and a hundred.
Forty-five and a hundred percent of the district judge.
Yeah, he's gotta be within the range of the district judge and he's.
We're closer to forty-five, but yeah.
Yeah, along the lower end.
Yeah, but.
Definitely on the.
Um, and the attorney also, he wasn't at the meeting. He had something else going on, but he provided us some information that, um, county, you know, he's a full-time attorney with no assistant and.
And also, he isn't allowed to have private office.
Right.
Or some counties.
Some counties are.
To do both.
So, he, he, he kind of, he did the, the work for us and he found eight counties that only have a full-time attorney with no, no assistants and they're not allowed to work outside. And the average salary for those people is eighty-six thousand four eighty-six, so. Um, and that's before the raise, that's before any raise this year. So, eighty-eight, our proposed eighty-eight thousand five, eighty-eight forty-six is rate in line. Now, the Iowa code for the sheriff, his to, his top deputy, is that right?
Mm-hmm.
Has to be eighty-five percent of the sheriff.
Has to be or can't be.
Can't be.
Can't be.
And, but we ran into trouble a few years ago because the deputy's raise were, raises were accruing faster than the sheriff's raise. And we actually got to over that eighty-five percent. And that, we were actually in violation of Iowa code if we didn't, uh, raise the sheriff's salary. I didn't realize all those codes existed, but there were nice little surprises in our meeting.
Couple of years when, um, you got the raise and, and officials did. So, that probably starts skewed, that'll start it skewed.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if, if, uh, from jumping in this after the zero percent was done one year.
Yeah.
Um, if, if one group is gonna do zero percent, I hope everyone else does. Because we've spent a lot of time trying to correct that zero percent that one year. And rightfully so, probably at the time, but, um, boy, the unions gotta be on board almost too then. We're figuring out because otherwise it's, it throws everything, threw everything off for several years.
So, you say this brings you back into, or with the area, other counties?
Yep, mm-hmm, yep. We try to.
We're not over and above and we're not.
No.
Underneath.
No, when we, when we do our research, we try to find the, uh, we try to find counties similar in population, uh, similar in aesthetics, you know, um, what they have going on in them and.
Couple of years when you got the raise and officials did, so I probably started skewing that, I started skewing that.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, if, if, from jumping in this after the 0% was done one year.
Yeah.
If, if one group is going to do 0%, I hope everyone else does, because we've spent a lot of time trying to correct that 0% that one year. And rightfully so, probably at the time, but boy, the union's got to be on board almost, too, then, if we're figuring it out, because otherwise, it throws everything, threw everything off for several years.
So, you say this brings you back into, or what the area, other counties?
Yep. Mm-hmm. Yep. We try to...
We're not over and above, and we're not underneath?
No. No. When we, when we do our research, we try to find, we try to find counties similar in population, similar in aesthetics, you know, what they have going on in them. And then we also review local raises. You know, Fort Dodge, I know they're, they warn county financial loopholes, and so, Webster County did 2% raises, or they proposed 2%. But, there's some budget concerns there. Now, we didn't hear anything on budget concerns here, so assuming you guys got that under control. But, you know, and that's something that probably needs to be discussed at later meetings, would make sure if we do have budget concerns, that we are ahead of. And, and one thing we did do is we're going to move our meeting now to early December.
Yeah.
So, that maybe we, we can jump on any budget concerns that there, there are in the future, so.
You guys are to be thanked for lots of extra work. I know it takes a lot of time and energy. You're not compensated very well, either.
Again, when I started the process, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm a banker, so I want to see the budget, right? I want to see the cash flow. It's not easy when you're of that mindset to jump into this and work on it later. But, I think understanding the process. Now, I'm done in June, so I don't know if I'll be, I'll be back on it or not. But, it was fun, really opened my eyes to the process, and...
Well, I think it is important to do people on that level.
I definitely...
I'll get a chance to see how it works and why it works.
The more people have to serve to me, the more people understand what we go through.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Corey. Yep.
Thank you.
We do need to sign one of those papers for you, if you wanted to mine, in color.
I'll make a motion to accept the base and file the compensation board's recommendations.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll start it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thanks, Corey.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Sure.
My turn.
Everybody stay safe here in the next couple of days.
Yeah. Sleep in the bed.
Yep, that's my...
Yeah.
You get invited a little bit and finish that, and we can talk to you about that, right? Is that what you have? Okay. Okay. How about committee reports?
Okay. Wednesday, I was down at the LEC, went from 10:00 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. with Bob Michelson from INS. And we went through a punch list with Woodruff down there. 95% it was just kind of touch-up paint, scuffs here and there, a couple of carpet issues. Added some door adjustments, making sure the doors all closed and shut. They had, at that point, they still had some tile to be laid in the entryway, so we couldn't give them a completion, 90, you know, completion date, which I think will be coming here shortly. And from that date that we give them the completion, then we have a year warranty on their work. So, that will be coming here probably this next week, or possibly this week. And then, 11 o'clock on Thursday, I was up here at the courthouse for the compensation board hearing, or not hearing, their meeting. Thought through that all the offices we represented. And I will compliment them. They give a lot of time for that. The people that are on that board, they do a good job. And they did a lot of research in this surrounding counties, so I think they're fair and considerate. So, that's all I got.
Very good.
Wednesday, the 27th, had citizens who were by during the Cherokee. The Mount Pleasant and Corinda closings, we, we've received everything from the Mount Pleasant that we're going to get, all the records and medical files and stuff like that. Because a lot of those payments were transferred to Cherokee. Corinda, we still have their medical records and, and their copy machine we were going to get. I'm on them, but Cherokee was one of the top 12 that received performance awards in the state of Iowa. They were, did pretty good on it, as far as that part goes. I do have a sheet of, I'll pass it around, let you see it, of all the people that were, had no letting be discharged, and dating records and stuff like that. You want to look at it. Just that status is all it is. Other than the work sessions during the week, that was all I had.
Okay.
Bruce? Uh, we had that work session, what, Monday, out of halls, quarter of secondary roads. Then on Tuesday, I went to Emmitsburg for the UDMO meeting up at the Iowa Lakes College there campus. The budget was, was, or went through the budget. The board recommended giving Jamie a 3% increase. Jamie is the gentleman that was here last week. Then I was also informed that at that point, Mary Orpman, who runs the several different offices down in this part of the state, had resigned, and she's accepted a job with the state of Iowa. So, Jamie was up, just said that we're in the process of trying to get a replacement for Mary. And then on Thursday, I had my CFR meeting down in Webster City. The budget was okayed. I did ask them about our time on, for our deputies. Michelle said that we need to have, either have Dean get ahold of her or through the hospital, because she said when I asked her about having a deputy, if someone is committed or needs to be transferred, it could take several hours. And all of a sudden, that just set off all these other counties, well, we only have a couple of deputies on, so that's going to be the same thing for us. So, she said that Dean or need to get ahold of them down there so that we can make sure, because we've been taking people over to Waterloo or wherever we can get a bid. And I told them before, next Monday, the 8th, instead of the Farm Bureau meeting, I have to run down to the CFR, is going for the Fort Dodge City Council. So, I'm going to run down to that, and then I'll come back to that other meeting. So, that'll be at the Fort Dodge Library, and possibly talking to them about that expansion. And that's all I do.
Thanks, Bruce.
Okay, Peggy, I also went to the workshop we had at County Shed on Monday. Then on Wednesday, we had regional mental health. I'll let Jerry tell about that. He's chairman of the organization. So, he kept us there for two hours. He can tell about that, Jerry. On Wednesday afternoon, I had a minus board meeting at Fort Dodge, and that's made up of three different committees, really. The Transit Committee, the Financial Committee, and the Planning Committee. So, all these people have their own little meetings, and they come together, and we have an overall meeting, which doesn't last very long, after you hear all those financial reports and approval. Anyway, what we end up doing is approving a bus purchase contract, changed some personnel policies a little bit just from wording, and also granted a loan to a county dairy farmer who wants to start making cheese. He's going to need some money for a seven-year project for that. I also welcomed Travis Yinkin, Yinkin, the new city manager, as a member of the board. He's already replaced by Walton Jensen. So, he's a good addition to the board. He's really taken a hold real well. On Thursday, the 28th, we had a regional housing meeting down at Fort Dodge. And basically, what we talked about there was trying to get some kind of a plan going. A lot of communities have inspections for slum landlords, where you, you have to go around and inspect their properties every once in a while to make sure they're not making people live in poverty. And we have nothing like that in the area. So, we're trying to figure out some way to come up with something like that, as well as maybe having a buring inspector for new construction. So, those two are topics we're working on a little bit in the multi-county area. Then at noon on that same day, Mid-Iowa Growth had a tax, what do you call it, tax incentive financing meeting. It's Tax and Finance 101. That was attended by some bankers, real estate people, city managers, school administrators, county supervisors. It was kind of interesting to go through the law, by how it's changed since it started to what it is now. Talked about whether it should be a sunset law, whether it shouldn't be a...
Talking on the TIF.
On the TIF, yeah. And some communities have thrived on that. And that's really a reading something.
Misused it.
That's right. That's right.
But, that's coming to a...
We have a man there for the state of Iowa showing how much of it's been used in different counties, different school districts, and how some are suffering and some are gaining. So, it's a law that you have to use within reason, but you can easily overuse it. And I think we've probably been pretty good shape here at town. We have, we have to be very careful. It's only the city councils and the board supervisors can do those kind of things. So, it was an interesting meeting. That was the extent of my meetings. Peggy?
Thanks, Carl. Yeah, I had the work session Monday afternoon, Hall. And as Carl said, a CSS meeting on Wednesday here in Hubble that must work. Thank Pat Tate again for allowing us to use this facility. Carl and Peggy were there. Peggy stayed for a while. Carl stayed probably through the whole thing. And as you can see, Carl said it's usually a two-hour meeting. We had a little more discussion because of the budget proposal and the spend down we're going to be looking at over the next three years. But, I think things are going well, and we, we're probably one of the better, we're, we are a good group of CSS people. I mean, we're doing our services. We're providing other extra services. We're trying to, you know, figure out, as we're going forward with the NCOs, how that's all going to work out. And some of that's been delayed, so there's questions there. Little concern was raised about, because Carl was probably there, about members of the board have to give out their social security number, and that raised a lot of concern, which I'm sure Bruce is already going to run into that. CFR, they're going to ask where down there, too, because they work with the NCOs, and I've had to give my number out for that. But, I mean, I understand why they need to do it, but it's, it's also very scary. I need to protect the interest of privacy of the individuals. They start giving out more and more information, so. And other than that, Bob, we've granted a budget. We had a few concerns or questions that we went back and forth on. And we've got new offices for next year, and our next meeting will be up in Cassup County. I think it's going to be at that museum, maybe. But, so, the first two are going to be kind of close, and then eventually I get spread out a little farther, and have to drive a little farther. So, and I'll be chairman this year, so if you've got any real concerns, bring them to me.
Maybe just follow the job meeting there, talk about the NCOs, the managed care organizations. And that seems to be a discussion, no matter where you go, with Iowa's coming off privatization of that. Anyway, we may get three of those representatives from each of those three managed care organizations on the agenda for the February 10th meeting down, February 11th meeting down in the...
Really?
Going to have them on the panel. So, come and shoot and pull the bullets. We can ask them those questions. They're so big, the left hand doesn't want the right hand doing a lot of time.
But, it's nice they're showing up, because there will be questions.
And I thought they'd be adversary, but they all worked together before, so I don't know how much I've got to learn from them. But, they'll all be on the stage together so we can fill and pull the questions.
Okay. I got a question for you, Peggy. Is there any way we can get a schedule for, like, how, starting in February or whatever, so that Jerry's at a meeting, I can look at my schedule and know that if I'm trying to get ahold of him on Wednesday night, well, he's done Ames at a whatever meeting, or Rick is, you just put this monthly schedule together, and then we add into it?
You guys will share it with me, because I don't normally know when you're...
I know, that's what I'm saying.
I did put a calendar out, we know.
Yeah. And then we just...
I know, sure, meetings are on certain days.
Right. But, that way, at least, if I'm trying to get ahold of you and then look at my, oh, he's done, or...
I'll send you the meeting.
Yeah. That way, I don't keep sending you a message and say, well, he just, so...
You guys could just get Google Calendars. It syncs all of your calendars together with your email.
Sure.
You'd be kind of the age of 40 that know that.
Well, that's something we do, we have to. That's probably where this is coming, we're thinking about doing that. Yeah, that'd be a good idea.
It's free and it's easy.
Yeah, that's, that'd be a good idea.
Exactly.
Good idea. Anything else?
That Bob you were talking about, is he the one that comes to the Cherokee meeting, too?
Bob Lincoln.
Bob Lincoln?
This is Bob Lincoln.
Yeah, there's a guy, he knows you real well.
I bet he does.
He's not a...
I bet that's Bob. Could be real, no?
He's dressed in a nice suit.
And he dresses up nice.
Now, that's probably Bob Lincoln, you know? All right. Anything else, Peggy? We need a motion to adjourn.
I know.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Very good.